Welcome to the April 4th, 2023 Angels Camp City Council Meeting. Rose, roll call please.
Mayor, uh, Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moncada is absent. Councilmember Tisconia.
Present.
Councilmember Brolio.
Present.
Councilmember Schirato is absent and staff is present.
Okay, that'll take us to Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is to report out of closed session. Direction was given to staff on both items A and B and item C has been continued to the next meeting. Item number four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
I'm gonna make an amendment. Sorry about this. So, um, item 7D should read, "To approve purchase of two trucks." No resolutions.
No resolutions?
Yeah, no. Yeah, just a motion, but approved.
So, we are looking for any other amendments or changes to the agenda, anybody? Any members of the public? So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the change on 7D.
So moved.
Alvin.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, it would be aye.
Aye.
And passive on a 302 vote. Public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none here, do we have anyone online with us, Rose?
One person and no public comment.
No public comment, okay. So, we will move on to item six, which is our consent agenda. We have two items on consent. Anybody need to pull or comment on items A or B on consent? Any members of the public? Okay, so bringing it back to council and looking for a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Alvin.
I'll second.
Gretel, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Regular agenda, item 7A. Approve Resolution 2340 awarding a contract and authorizing the city administrator to execute said contract for constructing the Utica Park bathroom pursuant to community development block grant CB23 with T and S West. And this is Amy, sorry.
Okay, councilmembers, this is time sensitive. We do have some deadlines on this particular project. This is for the new bathroom at Utica Park and we did receive three proposals. One did not qualify because they failed to basically give the cost for installation and they did not attend the mandatory pre-conferences. Of the two that were remaining, one emphasized durability and security for the bathroom. Of course, that is the one that we are recommending that you hire. They, we may be revisiting this, asking for it to be made into a double bathroom, I think it's just a single bathroom, but because of the way the funding is set up, we need to contract for just the one person bathroom at this time, all gender, A and E accessible. And I'd be having to answer any questions.
We're going. Chris, Chris O'Flynn and Jessica Johnston and John.
John.
We're all on the review committee as well.
Okay.
So.
And it was an unanimous recommendation.
So the only difference between a single and a double is 112 and 132?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, we won't know till we ask them, but it looks like it's gonna be pretty phenomenal.
Yeah.
But because how CDBG grants work, we have to.
Start here.
Start here.
Really?
And then, yeah, we will address that now as a change order with council utilizing the other grant funding that we have with the second half.
CDBG has really extensive prevailing wage and labor clerical, I mean, there are binders to do for them. So we try to do a little of that possibly.
Gretel, you had any questions?
Um, no, I'm just 100% for putting in two. I mean, it's not that much more.
No.
Totally necessary.
Let me figure, you know, the, the big cost is gonna be the site prop, you know, the plumbing, right, for the, whether it's the utility water, wastewater and the electric poles. That all has to be done anyway, so.
Yeah.
100% extension of the other half is not, is pretty involved.
And I'm not saying I have never worked with somebody so far who was so diligent about getting all the paperwork in immediately and being so on top of contracting this stuff.
Nice.
As T and S.
Uh, her name was Angela.
But you're talking about the contractor, T and S West?
T and S, yes.
Good.
I, I think it's great.
Um, does this mean that we won't have to have the.
Yes.
Mortar platters down there anymore? Or we will, we will no longer?
We will no longer. It was, the, that was part of, part of it, was making sure it was ADA.
For sure.
Yes.
Because of the tour, we showed them what we already had.
And these are gonna have to be built first and they're not gonna be in the way of any of the back work.
They have already contacted the lawyer because lawyer hopefully by the end of this month, early next month, will know exactly where they're gonna go. We knew pretty close to where they were gonna go and everybody been on the same location so that we would compare apples to apples.
Right.
And if we have to put in a wire, we're working through that.
Great. Exciting. Okay, so let's see if we have any members of the public that have questions or comments on our bathrooms. And here, anybody have their hand up online, Rose?
No.
All right. Bringing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
What? She says we're getting excited about that.
That's where we are now.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2340.
Absolutely.
I'll second it.
And I am also in favor, so it looks like it's gonna pass with a 3-02. Yeah, push for the bill. Perfect. Moving on to item 7B. Acknowledge the completion of the City of Angels Housing Element Annual Report for 2022.
Mayor and councilmembers, we have to do this once a year. It's tied to various funding sources, as I tell you every single year and you get tired of me telling you this, SB2 lead community development block grants, we would not be getting a new bathroom. We're not for doing this presentation once every year. So far in our element, which goes from 2019 to 2027 for our housing element, we were supposed to provide 244 new dwelling units by 2027. So far, we produced 28. So clearly, we are not going to reach 244, that would be highly unlikely. I do wanna let you know that they, the state is making significant changes in their regional housing needs assessments. They are basing them on population growth and since we are not having growth, we're having minor declines. For example, it's while the campus was released recently, they were told they needed two more units for the next housing period.
Next cycle.
Yeah, they don't have to make up for deficits from previous cycles or anything, but only two units versus, as you're saying for us, 244. And that was two for the City of Sona also. So we are expecting a significant decline next time we come up for a renewal. So basically, that's pretty much it, other than the monies that we did get SB2 in the past year. You've been exhausted listening to all of these ordinances and resolutions. I will tell you, we have completed, or nearly completed, 30 of the implementation programs in our general plan housing element. I know general plans that never complete a single program. Is there a general plan, so?
Good job, everybody. That's awesome.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No questions.
I don't either, it's just.
Everybody can have a great time.
Too soon, yeah.
I feel a whole nother.
I say we got pissed off.
But we're gonna make good a budget.
I know.
Members of the public, anybody need to comment on this? Questions or comments online? Okay, so we're acknowledging this, we don't need, you're not looking for a motion or anything on this, it's just a presentation. Okay, thanks for that, Amy. Item 7C is also a presentation of fiscal year 2122 financial statement. Michelle.
Okay, so you have in your packet the draft audit financial statement. This year, we were required to have a single audit because we had more than 240,000. So when I began, Rams was focused mainly on closing the previous fiscal year and so we had a full year of journal entries and bank disbursements and all sorts of things. So it was a good time to also start some of the cleanup that Remick has spoken about with how we would allocate funds. We put in a cost allocation plan to justify how we were allocating between, you know, wastewater, wastewater. So those were things that we started to implement last year and brought forward to this year. And, and this year, we're taking this up farther and doing a lot of cleanup of the chart of accounts. It's massive and, or streamlining it is making more sense. And so, moving forward though, in the report that you have in front of you, I had listed some key areas, some of the changes from the previous fiscal year in cash, the net position. Well, the net position had increased for the city from the previous year, 4.21 million. But cash and investments were 700,000 lower, but I wanted to point out, a lot of that was tied up with construction in progress, Murphy's Grade Road. We've had quite a bit in billings due to us, over a billion dollars at the end of the year, plus some other billings that were also behind and didn't get filled until October. So we've cut off on all of those and we have them now on a cycle, we're billing them monthly or quarterly, making sure that we get reimbursed on all of our projects. So we're getting that in place and, so that's really where a lot of the cash, we see that. We had a really positive year, but cash has gone down. So why? Well, it was tied up in billings that needed to be done, construction in progress and whatnot. And then you'll see business type activities increased, 1.8 million. Now, that is like our water, wastewater program. A lot of that is the change in allocations. There was quite a bit that was being allocated to water and wastewater and should have never been under the general fund. So that, all the fact last year, we cleaned all of that up. So that you won't see when we go into the next fiscal year, well, as we close this fiscal year 23, you won't see as big of a difference, yeah, as you're, you're seeing here. That makes up a lot of that difference, it's just changing the way things are being allocated. And then we had major capital project funds, 1.7 million increase, a lot of that is a lot of the assets and different things, the projects that we were working on at that time. And then, one note I put in here, which also ties to water and sewer, total revenues of 4.7 million, but the total expense was 2.9 million, netting an income of 1.7. So that goes back up to the top, what we talked about allocations, because compared from operations, compared from the prior year net, it was only 482,000, we made that 1.7 this year. So you can really see that difference there. I can go through, so Larry finished, he came out, he finished his work, field work in January. He had originally come out in October and he started testing. We weren't 100% close, we were still working on closing the books since we had a full year that we just started reconciling. So he was able to come out and do the testing for trust payable, house receivable, some of those where he's actually looking at fiscal cash receipts. And then with his schedule, he couldn't make it back out till January, he was booked up. So we, he came back out in January, finished up his testing, he was here, ended January, about three days, and then went back to the office and worked remotely and was able to get the report to us. We were able to file it on Friday on time because we had a deadline on March 31st to file it. So it has been already sent to the clearinghouse and, and so we, we met that deadline or else we were gonna get another fight. If we didn't, so this next year, we will definitely be closing it in December. It should, everything should be finished in December, we should bring this to you in the December meeting, so it'll be.
Yeah. And, you know, and I think, you know, when, when I was looking at, when I started, there were just, you know, asset balances and liability balancing, that just did not make sense. And so when you look at accounting balances, it's not like you can immediately just go, oh, it's this right here. You've gotta find the chew ends of spaghetti and try to figure it out. And so when Michelle came on, I had done some of it, just at least identified where, where we needed to look. And then when she came on, that was something that I touched her with, is we really need to get these cleaned up. And some of these balances go back years, years and years and years. So it, it's not a, just a quick, like, five minute figure it out, it could take hours, days. Some of them, you're having to go back and find old resolutions, old staff reports to try to figure out exactly what was the methodology in things. So a lot of that is going to clean up and we're working, as we're going through this, we're working with departments to, to, you know, you know, are there things that would make more sense or that you wanna change? And so as part of the budget development, we're talking to departments about, some of them would like to consolidate some of the current accounts because there's just too many for them to, to manage. It makes a lot more sense. In some cases, we wanna expand some of the chart of accounts, just because that would make it easier for us to look back. One of the examples is, you know, we've had a lot of tree falling. And so if you just put that under maintenance, like, what, what does that mean? So when you see this, like, $10,000 spike one year, or $15,000 spike one year, you'd have to really dig through to see what was it. So trees are something we have to manage every single year, so it should really have its own, own account. Same thing with pavement maintenance. Those, they're not CID projects, but they're just general pavement management.
Right.
And so we, and, and a lot of that ties with water and wastewater. So we have a main line, which I don't know if it was this fiscal year or last fiscal year, I can't remember. This one, was it this fiscal year? We had two.
Brakes.
Brakes, one in Greenhorn and one in.
Country lane.
Country lane, CN. Both of those caused major pavement repairs. And we generally are not budgeting for pavement repairs, but we know we're having to do pavement repairs every year. So instead of just putting that under just like services and supplies, it would be better for us to break that out, so it's easier for us to identify and make sure that we're budgeting for that. And the really, you know, I had estimated when we put the 2223 budget, we were probably gonna close at about 4 million and on the signed fund balance for the general fund, we closed at 4.5. So about half a million higher than what I have.
And this was Larry Thane.
So that's one thing we are going to do, RFP.
Yeah, we're not supposed to use him.
Well, we, I, we, we started using it.
You can use him.
Several years.
You can technically use them for a period of five, which I'm certain, we've gone over that. And then you have to go out and if there's no other response, you can justify having to continue however the state would want the partner to change. So the primary couldn't be Larry, it would have to be someone else.
At that same.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if you're, if you're gonna continue. But yeah, we will need to put a RFP out for all of these things.
Yeah.
No, I'm good, that's.
So on the recommendations though, there was to get somebody trained in GAAP or hire somebody for that?
So I will never hire an external accounting person again. That is what caused this.
Okay.
That was a really not good solution. So, so Michelle, I am sharing a lot of training through, we, so we joined the GFOA, which is Governmental Accountants Officers Association. They have a lot of really good training that you can attend virtually or in person. So she, I did ask for her to go to the, I think it's the Advanced Governmental Accounting One. Governmental accounting is just fun. Really fun. And they don't really teach it in schools anymore. And they used to have governmental accounting as a class that you could take, but nobody ever signed up for it because when you're in college, everybody thinks you're never gonna work for government, so why would I ever take a governmental accounting class? Later, they realized, oh, I am working for government and I should have taken that class. But because they didn't have really good enrollment, colleges for the moral party still live today. So it's, it's like GFOA or Gatsby, you know, might have something, you know, different kind of, I guess, what do you call them? Yeah, but different classes are available through different avenues.
ICMA, they're certified classes because CPAs can get education. So they're established, it's not just a fly by night.
I just saw that that was a recommendation in there, I just wanted to touch base on that.
It's a compatible with some training and certification that when we need it, you'll be, you'll be locked in.
There's just little nuances in governmental accounting that are just fun. But I would still say, and this is an argument that Larry and I have on a regular basis, that the biggest issue was having external accounting.
Class.
Cost that, because you've got, I mean, literally, there's like 10 years of, of accounts that have the wrong balance, like, it was negative and it should have been positive, or it's positive and it should have been negative, or erroneous JEs that you have no idea.
Journal entry was.
Journal entry even was. And they were not, they were not posted by city staff, they were posted by, you know, one of the several external accounting firms. So you just have to have in-house knowledge because they are at the level determining what should or should not be posted. And I am a huge, you know, believer of you don't post it unless you have proof. That was also some of the issues that we would uncover where postings would be based on estimates or would be posted on, you know, what they thought was happening and it wasn't. So there's just been a lot of cleanup and I don't think Larry understood the extent of the cleanup that we were having to do.
Hmm. Are we there yet?
We are, we're very close, yeah.
Good.
And my first primary goal was just get our cash right. Get our cash.
Oh, yeah.
Because the cash wasn't that right. And so Rams tried and it still wasn't accurate. So that was a huge product that I had Michelle working on and just trying to dig through and it's, it's a lot of transactions you're having to dig through to, to, to deal with that. So it's like needle in a haystack. But yeah, so I'm confident, cash is good, I'm confident, you know, we've addressed the big problems that I saw in the accounts. We've got some like little outlier ones in payroll that are pretty small that we just are gonna have to go through and in some cases, we're just gonna have to, it's, it's, it's not gonna get cleared out, so we'll just do an adjustment, expense it out.
Strike for it. Yeah, so no, no significant deficits, no instances of non-compliance, no material weaknesses, I mean, I was, everything I read. And then what's the city that not qualified for a low risk audit? What is that?
Is that the highlighted thing?
Yeah, what is that?
We couldn't undo the highlight.
Oh.
I don't know why it got highlighted.
I was just wondering why I had to key in on that.
Well, you have to because it's highlighted.
Because it's highlighted, I didn't know what the heck it's on.
Well, he did.
I did. I, well, I got the other.
Michelle and I were trying and we were like.
I mean, I got the other good things too, no significant deficits, no instances of non-compliance, those are good things too. So, okay.
Okay.
So the, the good news is, you know, Chris O'Flynn is a lot happier because his water and sewer funds are in a much healthier position, you know, which I tell him, don't get all excited, we definitely have projects that we need to spend it on, but at, at least we have the ability to plan for that and make sure that we're incorporating those projects against, or those buttons against Mount Grandfather.
Okay, so that was a presentation, do we have any comments from the public? Questions or comments online? All right, so bringing it back, I'd like to thank you, Michelle, it's, it's a pleasure. You really worked diligently on it.
Michelle does awesome.
Well, and I can tell that the two of you have like this like geeky, like way to talk.
Something, I forgot.
Skeet, journal ledger.
Rose.
No, just a little.
Okay, item 7D. It's not approved the resolution, but we're looking for a motion to purchase two trucks from Chase Chevrolet for water, wastewater and Public Works Department, Michelle. So we found, cleaned that money up, now we need to spend it.
Yeah, we did, and that was actually, but we had pretty had more than that budgeted. He actually has a little savings, so he's kinda like, well.
But now he feels comfortable.
He feels comfortable purchasing.
Right, right, right.
He's, one of his trucks he's replacing is a 1996 truck that is just completely like done and then the other one, I think he said he replaced the engine in it, it was like a 2001 or, and now the transmission's gone, and so he's gonna surplus both of those vehicles and he's very excited because they're, you know, holding it for him and he should be able to get the vehicles by Friday and he said he won't have to drive his personal truck anymore. Yeah, he'll actually have enough vehicles that he can.
Cause of two instead, yeah.
Definitely, yeah, yeah. So, and he said he'd like to put a plan in place going forward of a new vehicle each year to kinda phase out the fleet because they're all pretty.
They're all very costly.
So, good, good plan. So he, we're, we're bringing this to you to inform you, it's part of the budget, so we don't need to do a budget, you know, adjustment and, you know, one of them forward with the purchase and got them two vehicles for water and wastewater.
Yeah, and they're above my.
Yeah. Nope.
Public comment?
Not really.
When's Public Works getting one?
He's getting one.
Why are they gonna fight over one of them?
Well, they will get the utility one, I believe, these two are for water and wastewater.
They're water, these are water sewer.
Purchase the third one for, but he definitely wants to put in the budget for Public Works. They didn't put anything in.
No, it's like, yeah, I, I know, they're beautiful.
So, so these are replacing water and wastewater. So he had two vehicles planned, but I think his budget was like 160,000 and we're coming in at like 180,000, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Oh, in favor, I will say aye. Going to pass on a three oh two. Item number seven, administration report.
So I got a call from Nikki Stevens today. She was with the Mark Twain dignity hall. She's now with MACT health board. And they are planning a groundbreaking on June fifth at eleven AM. And they will be sending invitations out. Obviously, they would like council and staff to be present if you are available. She thinks about two hundred and fifty will be there. I'll work with Chief Ellis just in terms of if he thinks we need to put any signage out for possible traffic impacts. It's just right there trying to get, you know, all two hundred and fifty all come in their own car. That'd be a little.
A little tight.
A little tight. So he might work in the city. He probably wants to handle that. But so she was letting us know and she's very excited about her role.
June fifth on a Monday.
Eleven AM. I posted this on social media. It's on our website and on Facebook. If you drive by Utica Park, you will probably be seeing some work happening. So right now we've got plastic fencing, kind of keeping the public out of certain areas. So they will be starting demo work. I think starting.
As soon as it stops raining.
Yeah. Is it raining?
The ground is still it's still oozing out of the ground.
So anyway, it's out there and then we just we just let people know, please don't.
I liked your don't move the fence.
Don't move the fence.
Why? Why would people move? I know.
Just don't move the fence.
Please.
So exciting. So we are going to start seeing some movement down there. So that is exciting. Angels Creek Trail, we have a presentation that is going to be coming to council to give you an update on the Angels Creek Trail. I think the last update you got was in twenty nineteen. And so I don't, you were probably there, but I'm not sure who else was present. So we wanted to bring it back just so everybody has fresh eyes and can see what the plan is, that it's still alive and it's still moving forward. So Matt Satow is going to come and do that presentation. I think we scheduled that.
There's a lot of things that.
Yeah, the next year. It could be the next one or the one after.
Yeah.
So Calvers County was included in the second winter storm federal declaration, which means the city as well, I submitted our, actually I had Michelle send it in as well as we have approved ratified that emergency proclamation. So we are in the queue for that. I did just meet with FEMA today to talk about the first winter storm disaster. And we're going through all the process with that. So we are working on identifying the sites where damage occurred. Site visit will probably happen either next week or the following week. So Chris O'Flynn is going to take the lead on that because I just know things are broken, but he can be much more informational since he, it's roads, water and wastewater infrastructure. So he will be working with them on that. We have sixty days from today to identify any other damage. So what I would say is if people see something, say something. You know, we're, I'm gonna have him talk to his staff just to make sure when they're going out and reading meters that they happen to drive by something and see something that looks a little off, just to let us know. Because now is the time to include that as damages associated with the winter storm. Otherwise, we, yeah.
So Gary Tofanelli told us in a presentation the other day that the county has not been reimbursed for the twenty nineteen winter storms from FEMA yet. That it's so intricate and detailed on the process to ask for the reimbursement and checking the boxes and filling out these lines. And they keep getting back and forth rejects. So I'm nervous about that.
I did not have that problem.
It can't, okay.
When I was there.
And it sounds like it's an administrative effort that they're not making.
Yeah, and and probably the biggest issue, and and so I was very clear with our staff. Document, document, document. And so if you don't properly document everything, they're just gonna pitch a back-up and they're not going to reimburse you. So that is the risk. So if you're gonna do anything, you just have to make sure it's very, very, very well documented. So we made sure our time cards are documented. We had we on day one, I think we set up project code for twenty twenty two winter storm. We set up project code for twenty twenty three winter storm.
We set up a work order for each one.
We set up a project code for each one. They all have to be a pro-eccore completely separately. Everything has to be, we have to have paper for everything. So as long as we've done that, you should be okay. Now, what I will say is on like mitigation grant stuff, that those those are projects that you can submit and it will take years for you to get through the environmental process for you to even get it shoveled. So you're not necessarily going to be out money other than leaving some initial environmental stuff that you have to do. But but your your real cost of construction, you can't even start those until you get completely blessed through the environmental process anyway. But the other thing is they change the grant process. It seems like they kind of realize what works and what didn't work every single time there's a disaster. And so during the fire, we had small projects, I think, were under like a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and thirty thousand. And so any project that was under that dollar amount, we would get advanced. So we just get the money off the off the back. But fire was a little bit different because it was so big. They actually advanced us, I think, like one point eight million dollars for that one.
That advanced number?
They because it was so critical what was happening. So they they just advanced a lot of money. Now they've changed it where small project is anything under a million. And if it's under a million, they just advance the money. And so all of our projects are going to be under a million. They're going to advance the money based on what our estimate is. That's why we have to work with our engineer to make sure. And then we would true up on the actuals. That's where it gets a little dicey.
On the true up part.
Because that's where you might be waiting. So if you underestimate it on a small project, then there's an appeal process and everything. So we just would want to make sure we either be over or really close because it will take a while to get that true up. But the bulk of it, it'll be fine.
Okay, cool.
So so yeah, so I'm working on those grants. And then also applied for California Disaster Assistance Act because the Public Assistance Federal Grant pays for seventy five percent of your costs. The California Disaster Assistance Act pays for seventy five percent of the remaining twenty five percent. And so that leaves us with six and a quarter. And then the six and a quarter, I'm looking for a grant to pick up some quarter. But that haven't come out yet. So I will be looking for that. But worst case, we would be six and a quarter.
Better than that.
Utica mine update, you will still see closure signs. We, I reached out to the county again today. I really need them to continue to escalate this, the chain. We did identify Amy. The a report on the Department of Toxic Substances Control on that particular property. So I did send that to the county. I sent it to the property owner. It was given at that time to the EPA. What they thought would happen is what's happening right now.
What was that report?
What, yeah, twenty nineteen was the last one and it started in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, they started quite a long time ago.
Yeah, so what they thought was gonna happen is exactly what happened. So I do need, so I emphasized to the county, we really need to get, you know, we need to get confirmation back from fishing game or whoever if we can open up the creek because fishing season is coming. So we really need to know that. So that's where that's at.
Are they are they testing? Are the numbers staying the same? Are they going down? Are they going up? Like, are they continuously testing?
They are not testing anything.
They're not?
No.
We did some testing initially.
We are doing some really basic testing with what we have. So we're continuing to monitor gas because it still smells.
Right.
And we're continuing to monitor like pH levels, oxygen levels, temperature. And there's also a green pole developing next to pole mine open just because of the amount of water on that hillside. So I did notify that the owner, she probably needs to start figuring how that's it off. So people will come up and clean down that hill. So that's the status of there. I'm just gonna continue to work on that. We don't have an environmental health department. We don't have a public health department. We don't have hazardous materials department that is responsible. And then he's not here, but I'm just gonna give a shout out. Chris O'Flynn's daughter got the gold medal for her essay at the Accadak. So it's very exciting. So.
Awesome.
Perfect. And for him, good parenting too. Yeah, exactly. Good job, Chris.
Thank you. Let's go to council report. Gretel, you got any report?
No, but I did, I have heard there's a request to put something out on Facebook or some kind of media that the park is getting a remodel. Because apparently there's a whole bunch of people that don't.
Put out and put out and put out.
Like make Jessica Johnson with the community clubhouse and Akba has, Doc has.
Are you thinking people that don't have?
I did hear it. I heard it on the Angels Camp bulletin board. I think maybe possibly it's more out of towners because we get a lot of it downtown. Julie gets it more than I do. But where people are coming in and asking about, oh, what's going on at the park? Why is the park, why can't we go to the park? Why is the park posted? You know, so I I think maybe out of town. I don't know. I don't even know how you reach them. I have no idea.
So do we use Nextdoor?
Nextdoor will not allow government agencies to join Nextdoor.
Really?
No.
Interesting. That's the only thing that I've heard.
Individuals can join Nextdoor or me as an individual. But the city links, so, right?
To our website?
No, no, I don't think. No? Because we tried to do that at CCWD and they just banned us.
Excellent.
No.
The only reason I ask is because I just joined it for the first time. I'm not familiar with it at all. But I've had people tell me that they're not social media people, but they like Nextdoor because it's just community involvement type stuff. There's there's a lot of solicitations, a lot of advertisements, but it's not like drama, if you will. I guess. I don't know. I was like, okay, I'll check it out. But sorry, that's why I asked.
We have to put up a sign. Oh, yeah. So we'll just go ahead.
Okay.
It's like, can we just put up a billboard and do like even a picture of what the parks look like?
There's something. I think mostly it's it's just people visiting and they just are like, oh, how come the park's closed? You know, so. I don't think it's locals, per se, like people that live here because we have been touched by them.
And we really increased the amount that we're talking about it. And then worked with like in that big media pub and Akba and shared it on the bulletin boards and everywhere we can possibly think of adding that. I've shared it with like the press.
Well, a sign will be good.
Yeah. It's required.
That's the only thing I heard.
I had UWPA. Kyle Rasmussen at ten years. I left my agenda out.
I have my notes here, but I felt like.
We acknowledge him for ten years of service and just really appreciate him. He's doing a great job. He's a conveyance operator and keeps the flume up and going. Keeps the water moving down the from the top, from Alpine down. So it's a really important job. We're also gonna do some banking type things. That was on there. And we approved that. That'll make us some money.
Make you some money.
Yep. And Joel actually called and talked to me about that today, so, which would be good. I had to split, I split it seven, like a pig auction.
Well, we're not in a drought anymore.
And then I think Joel gave an update on his trips.
From DC. So there was a bunch of legislation oppositions that he spoke about. And I don't know if you are aware of them, but they they're all really interesting. That a lot of stuff that has to do with water and the regulations of water. So it was like, well, AB ninety nine was a restriction of Caltrans ability to spray weeds and herbicides along the highway. So he, we voted to be in opposition of that. AB four sixty was against the curtailment of diversions that would impose minimum stream flow. So more restrictions on on what we could do with our water. AB thirteen thirty seven, also curtailing diversions and water use. SB three eighty nine against the State Water Board investigating water rights claims. So basically, if you have water rights, they can just say, yeah, there's like prove, prove it. Like you are, you have to have the.
You have to pay to prove it.
Yeah, to prove that you have those water rights when you've had them all along. So huge water right. And then SB twenty three, we were in support of, not in opposition, but in support. And it was streamlined permitting process for the four oh one water, four oh one permits. So really streamlining the whole process, which was attractive and the stream bed alterations. And then I think that's what, we did make a nomination for Scott Raderman to be our executive committee for the JPIA.
Right.
And the insurance. So that was done. And.
It'll be voted in, I think, May? He's running.
I'm sorry, yeah, we were just endorsing him.
We just endorsed him.
Yeah, and he's running.
He was on the CCWD for the past twelve years, some years. He's been with the.
Yeah, so he's, we're just supporting him. I think he's got a shot at it. Yeah, what is it, May? Next month, maybe?
Yeah, it's in a month or so.
Oh, and we adopted our contract, water contractor rates twenty twenty three.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah.
I did meet with Jessica and Joel this morning. So he is, we we both agreed to bring to our respective council and board a letter of support for the near market project. So we'll be drafting that up and then giving it to you to sign and then bringing it to council.
Okay, and then myself, I attended UWPA with Alvin. I was a spokesperson at Screen Horn Creek last week at the Republican Party meeting. It was a small meeting, kind of informal. But there was a good, a good amount of people, thirty so people there. And they're trying to get back into their maybe monthly, quarterly, quarterly meetings, I believe. So it was myself and and Gary Tofanelli was the other spokesperson. That's where he spoke about FEMA and such. And that's all I had reported on. Those are the things. How about item number nine, calendar rules?
Cog tomorrow, the museum Thursday. All hazards for Gretel on the eleventh. The twelfth through the fourteenth, Rebecca and Caroline will be attending the City Leaders Summit for Lega Cities. Planning is on the thirteenth. She's also having the open house here from four to six regarding rezoning. City Hall will have no power on the fourteenth. We are getting that all finally in place. And we're down on the nineteenth is the IRWMA, which is Rebecca and Criff. And then CPPA on the nineteenth. And then obviously the eighteenth is our other equal meeting. So that's it. Hello?
Perfect, perfect. Anybody have any recommendations for future agenda items?
I think you guys will stack it up pretty good.
Next couple of meetings, so I'll leave that up to you.
It is, uh huh.
So no recommendations? Okay, looking for item eleven, adjournment.
I will second it. I have a second.
Gretel's second. I didn't even get a motion in today. All right, you guys. Six fifty-three. Thank you very much.
Ready?
You.